Good evening of the agenda review session. We have ordinances on second reading. Read those one at a time.
Yes, please.
Number one, bottom ordinance providing for the funding of various park improvements by in the city of New Brunswick, in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating $371,000, therefore authorizing issuance of not to exceed $353,000 bond or notes to finance part of the cost thereof.
Mr. Anderson, members of council, before you continue, when we get to the regular meeting and we arrive at these particular ordinances on second reading, the law is going to require that they be carried to the 21st and readvertised because they weren't advertised for adoption, seeing that as the council and the public is aware due to this snowstorm and the state of emergency, we adjourned the meeting last week and set down time as a special meeting. So none of these ordinances on second reading can be adopted tonight. They have to be carried to the 21st and readvertised in connection with that particular night's meeting.
Okay, so we're going to do the same and we'll do our first reading.
When we get to the regular meeting, when we're done with the agenda session, what we're going to ask for is a motion.
And we'll read them all first then.
No, you can go right through them now. You don't have to read them all. You can go right to the agendas. You can read the ordinances on first reading though, since they're version.
We have ordinances for our first reading. Number one, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.16 Stopping Standing or Parking, Section 1016020, Schedule 24, no parking any time regards to Lewis Street. And number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.16 Stopping Standing or Parking, Section 1016050, Schedule 29, time limit parking, Section 1016020, Schedule 24, no parking any time regards to College Avenue. Resolution for one, approve agenda amendments. Number two, approve payroll, 21718 and 3218. Three, authorize refund to redeem tax sales certificates. Four, approve amendment of resolution R.111749, reason additional $54,000 to pay 2017 invoices due to ongoing tax appeals with Holman Longo Moran Dunson Dukas LLP, 2017 Special Counsel for Tax Appeals, Division of Assessments from $100,000 to $154,000. Number five, approve off-premise raffle merchandise at 70 College Avenue, New Brunswick, Jewish Family Vocational Service of Middlesex County, date Sunday, June 24, 2018. Six, authorize application, acceptance, and execution of grant agreement for 2018 for 2018 Safe and Secure Communities Grant Program, Grant Number 20181213, amount $60,000. Seven, approve amendment of resolution R.011857, reason pay additional legal fees in the amount of $3,125 to Orleo and Donahue LLC, representation of Mayor James Hayhill in the matter of Arthur Anderson et al. versus the city of New Brunswick et al. on punitive damage claims from $249,150 to $252,275. Eight, approve request for street closing requested by Holy Family Parish Sacred Heart St. Joseph, location Sacred Heart Church on Troop Avenue, the left on Townsend Street, across French Street to Harvey Street, stopping at Harvey Street Park, then to Somerset Street St. Joseph's Church at the corner of Maple Street for Good Friday Religious Procession Friday, March 30, 2018, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., police extra duty. Number nine, approve request for street closing requested by Rutgers State University for the 10th Annual Rutgers Day, Hamilton Street between George Street and College Avenue, Saturday, April 28, 2018, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then the Rutgers Day Parade timed at 9:30 a.m. to 12:15 p.m. Location parade begin at Senior Street down College Avenue, the left on Seminary Place proceed through Gordy's Mall ending Hamilton Street, police extra duty. Ten, approve request for street closure requested by Rutgers University Student Organization Women Organizing Against Harassment for the annual Take Back the Night March to support survivors of sexual violence and a protest against assault and violence on campus and in the community, location George Street, Somerset Street, College Avenue, Wednesday, April 18, 2018, rain day Thursday, April 19, 2018, 8:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Eleven, approve request for use of city property and street closing requested by New Brunswick Recreation, New Brunswick Tomorrow for Ziclobia, park locations Recreation Park and Feastery Park, location parts of some city streets to be closed to encourage residents to walk, run, skate, or bike in city streets, Saturday, June 9, 2018, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., police extra duty. Twelve, approve request for use of city property requested by the city of New Brunswick, Boyd Park, Annual River Festival, Saturday, September 29, 2018, set up only 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The date is Sunday, September 30, 2018, the event date, the event hours are 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., park usage hours are 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., police extra duty. Thirteen, approve request for use of city property requested by New Brunswick Cultural Center for Fourth Annual Hub City Sounds, Corazon Latino Festival and Ziclobia, location Joyce Kilmer Park, Sunday, October 14, 2018, event hours 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., park usage hours 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Approve request for use of city property and street closing requested by New Brunswick Cultural Center, Lazos America Lumina, for Cinco de Mayo Celebration and Parade, park location Monument Square Park, street closing for parade, Livingston Avenue and Public Library to Joyce Kilmer Avenue to Patterson Street to George Street to Monument Square Park, date Sunday, May 6, 2018, event hours are 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., park usage hours 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., parade is 12:30 p.m. to 1:00 p.m., police extra duty. Fifteen, approve on-premise raffle 50/50 College Avenue Student Center, 126 College Avenue, New Brunswick, for Rutgers University Foundation, Friday, April 13, 2018. Sixteen, approve request for use of city property and street closing requested by New Brunswick Cultural Center for Hub City Sounds Festival, Gala...
Galgetza.
Galgetza, celebrating conditions of people of Wahaka.
Wahaka.
Wahaka, location Boyd Park and Amphitheater, date Sunday, July 22, 2018, 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., park usage hours 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., street closing time is 1:00 p.m. to 1:30 p.m., street closures begin at Walgreens on Jersey Avenue, to Handy Street to French Street to Sedam Street to Railroad Avenue, New Street to Boyd Park, police extra duty. Seventeen, approve request for use of city property requested by New Brunswick Cultural Center for the Third Annual Hub City Sounds Caribbean Festival, Boyd Park and Amphitheater, Saturday, August 25, 2018, event hours 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., park usage hours 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., police extra duty. Eighteen, approve request for use of city property requested by New Brunswick Cultural Center for Hub City Sounds Rock New Brunswick, Punk Hip-Hop and Rock that came from New Brunswick, location Boyd Park and Amphitheater, Saturday, September 8, 2018, event hours 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., park usage hours 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., police extra duty.
Mr. Anderson, we are requesting to hold 19 and 20. If you have a three-member council and four votes for those two resolutions, what carries those to the next meeting?
Okay, so 19 and 20 will be carried over.
Right.
Twenty-one, approve request for use of city property requested by New Brunswick Cultural Center for Third Annual Hub City Sounds Indo-American Festival and First Annual Yoga Festival, Boyd Park Amphitheater, Sunday, September 9, 2018, event hours 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., park usage hours 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., police extra duty. Twenty-two, approve request for street closing requested by New Brunswick Cultural Center, location George Street between Liberty Street and Byard Street, Sixth Annual Central Jersey Jazz Festival, Saturday, September 15, 2018, event hours 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., street closure 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., police extra duty. Twenty-three, approve award contract with Certified Health and Safety Services LLC for safety consultant and trainer for the water utility term, is 12-month period commencing March 14, 2018 and ending March 13, 2019, specification number 662-18, not to exceed $5,964 fair and open. Twenty-four, approve person-to-person transfer of liquor license from George Street Restaurant Group LLC trading as Tomwati Pub to DHS Hospitality Incorporated trading as Tavern on George, 361 Georgia, liquor license number 121433085004. Twenty-five, approve resolution authorizing amended contract for additional $30,027.30 receiver wage supported beach housing project with VCUW Madeline Chin LLC. Twenty-six, approve award of contract with Creative Product Sourcing Incorporated doing business as Dare Catalog for purchase proprietary goods for the police department not to exceed Twenty-seven, approved purchased by police department under state contract A89851M0003 software license related services with She International. Is it She or S-H-I?
S-H-I.
S-H-I. For Microsoft Service Agreement for the police department not to exceed $35,362.55. Twenty-eight, approve amendment of resolution R.041749, reason one-year contract extension with air systems maintenance for temperature control HVAC maintenance and repairs, term period commencing March 16, 2018 and ending March 15, 2019, specification number 581-17P not to exceed $54,500. Twenty-nine, approve amendment of resolution R.011888, reason correct name of vendor to Oxy-Ox activated carbon LLC, furnish and deliver chemicals for bulk feed facilities, Oxy-Ox activated carbon LLC, period commencing February 1, 2018 and ending January 31, 2019, specification number 106201HW not to exceed $118,800. Thirty, authorize tax collector to transfer several tax and utility overpayments. Thirty-one, resolution to approve the extension of the UEZ Clean Team contract with the NVPA for 2018 for clean team services in the downtown Eastern Avenue, French Street, and Remston Avenue, January 1, 2018, December 31, 2018, amount $125,000. Thirty-two, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance and lane closure requested by NAP Lacy, reason place a boom truck on Somerset Street in order to install a new final cap at the St. Peter Apostle Church at 94 Somerset Street, date Saturday, March 10, 2018, alternate date Saturdays, March 17 and March 24, timed 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., number 10. Thirty-three, approve amendment of resolution R.111752, change order number four with Garden State Highway Products, 2017 Furnish and Deliver Regulatory Signs, specification number 912-17, amount $123.36, approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Thirty-four, approve amendment of resolution R.091772, change order number one, credit with J. Construction Corporation trading as Diamond Construction, installation of ADA ramps at the intersection of Lee Avenue and Lawrence Street and at Nielsen Street and Byard Street, specification number 915-17, credit amount $296.50, approval of this change will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Thirty-five, approve award of contract furnish and deliver work uniforms for public works, water utility, public property, parks and shade trees, engineering, library, and police department garage, specialty graphics LLC, 12-month period commencing March 14, 2018, ending March 13, 2019, specification number 653-17P not to exceed $52,705. Thirty-six, approve amendment of resolution R.111517, change order number two with Jack Construction Corporation trading as Diamond Construction, crosswalk safety improvements, added roadway warning lighting system, Lee Avenue and Comstock Street, Lee Avenue and Delaware Street, Remston Avenue and Handy Street, Remston Avenue and Ward Street, specification number 881-15, amount $37,720, approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Thirty-seven, authorized purchase by Bullet Water Utility under state contract A40808/T-0126-OBM and non-OBM maintenance and repair services for light medium duty vehicles from Malute Ford Incorporated doing business at Malute Ford Lincoln Mercury, automobile repair for public property for repair 2006 Ford E150 van not to exceed $1,800. Number thirty-eight, approve resolution to authorize refund of escrow to women and mayors amount $1,356, financial discussion reminder public portion, et cetera. The meeting will come to order. Court, please call the roll.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig is absent. Council President Fleming is absent.
Please be advised of the notice of requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act that have been complied with and satisfied and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed, the city clerk has been placed on appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of city hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick namely, The Home News. Please stand for the pleasure.
At pleasure, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for offended women who fight to oversee all those killings that have happened in the world. Thank you.
Chairman, if a motion would be permitted for the February 23rd.
Second.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes. Report any correspondence by city clerk.
A letter from Scovola giving notice of delivery of labor or materials to JTG Construction Inc., an invitation to the city council members to the Memorial Day Parade Monday, May 28, 2018 at 11:00 a.m. A letter from New Jersey Dot that our community has been selected to receive funding for the fiscal year 2018 Municipal Aid Program for Nickel Ave. A letter from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection to inform administrative requirements for the remediation of contaminated sites has been submitted. A letter from the city of New Brunswick to inform property owners of the Raritan River Conservation Area diversion of PSENG Eastman. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have no public hearings.
No.
Orders is on second reading, you should go to one.
Yes, you did, sir. Sorry.
Okay. Number one, bottom ordinance providing for the funding of various park improvements by in the city of New Brunswick and the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating $371,000, therefore authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $350,000, bonds or notes to finance part of the cost thereof.
Move the ordinance setting down March 21st at 6:30, same date to be advertised.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes. For two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic Stopping Standing or Parking, Section 101610, Schedule 38, time limit parking areas for Lewis Street.
Move the ordinance setting down March 21st at 6:30, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes. Number three, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic Stopping Standing or Parking, Section 101610, Schedule 38, time limit parking areas regards to Central Avenue.
Move the ordinance setting down March 21st at 6:30, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes. Number four, ordinance to the city of New Brunswick and the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey approving the application for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing the city of New Brunswick to enter into a financial agreement with the standard at New Brunswick Urban Renewal LLC in granting a tax exemption regards to 9th Street Lot 129, Lot 5.01.
Move the ordinance setting down March 21st at 6:30, same date to be advertised.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes. Number five, ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 5 Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5.80 Rent Control at new section 5.80.095, requiring landlords to provide written receipts for rents, other payments paid in cash or by money order.
Move the ordinance setting down March 21st at 6:30, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes. Agrees on first reading, number one, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Traffic 10.16, Stopping Standing or Parking, Section 10.16.020, Schedule 24, no parking any time Lewis Street.
Move the ordinance setting down March 21st, 2018, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes. Number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.16, Stopping Standing and Parking, Section 10.16.050, Schedule 29, time limit parking in Section 10.16.020, Schedule 24, no parking at any time regarding College Avenue.
Move the ordinance setting March 21st, 6:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes. We now have resolutions, one through, thirty-eight excluding number nineteen and twenty. Any member from the public wish to speak on any of the resolutions, please. Please state your name and remember five minutes.
Good evening, members of the council. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, I'm editor of New Brunswick Today, like to ask about 807, this is now more than a quarter million dollars being paid just to represent the city's mayor on punitive damage claims in this lawsuit alleging corruption and racism in the New Brunswick Police Department. Can you give me an update on this lawsuit? Is it any closer to a conclusion or is it still in the discovery phase?
Appreciate it.
We're still in discovery, but to correct Mr. Cradaville's statement, actually the amount is for two lawsuits, one of which has been resolved, the Middleton lawsuit as well, but this amount for the charge here that's being approved is just for the Anderson case, but the total amount was for both lawsuits, one of which is resolved.
Like to ask about 824, transfer of liquor license, can you just tell me the amount of the sale of the liquor license?
We know, sure. It's $150,000.
Thank you. 825, the amended contract for this project, they just held the ribbon cutting today, I believe, can you tell me why, what's the additional $30,000 for, for what reason?
They're providing some additional furnishings for the apartments that are there so they can have beds and dresses and so forth.
The apartments come furnished.
Thank you. 831 is the clean team agreement contract with the NVPA, can you tell me, is it true that the NVPA still does not pay into this fund? Do they only take from it?
They provide the service and between the city of New Brunswick and city market would contribute to pay for their services.
Okay, so is this funded through the city market or the UEZ?
This one is the reuse of, is it, I believe we're using UDAC funds if I'm not mistaken to pay for our portion of it.
Okay.
UDAC funds that have been recycled over the years.
Okay, how exactly are they recycled? I don't understand that concept.
Many, many years ago, some of those UDAC funds were loaned out when repayment came in, that's what I'm referring to as recycle.
So there's still repayments being made on UDAC loans?
I don't know if there's any new repayments, but there's a fund that has been established over the years.
Okay, and just for the record though, the park authority does not pay into city market still?
Pay into city market, their land being assessed.
Right.
My guess is they should be exempt. I see Pam, maybe she wants to clarify that for me, but I would think their property is exempt from the city market, the SID taxation.
I understand that they haven't paid in the past, but I would think, since they own so much land in the district, it would be, makes sense for them to chip in, especially if they're getting paid to conform certain services as well, but that's just my opinion. That's all I have on the resolutions, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions?
Prove the resolutions.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes. And I think that the council should bring up. Public discussion, please come to the microphone, please state your name, where you live, and I hope you have five minutes. Seeing none.
Good evening once again, members of the council. Charles Cradaville, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to bring up one of the ordinances that you have scheduled for the 21st, and I want to ask if any of the members that are here tonight have decided how you're going to vote on not being the long-term tax exemption for the standard?
I'm still going over.
Could I hear from the other two members, if you've decided how you're going to vote?
No.
Okay, well, I encourage you to look into the impacts, I know it's rather complicated how the state law on this works and how the agreement with the developer works, but I have done some research and I have some figures that I'd like to share, if possible, I'll give them to your clerk here. You can see this would be year one of the 30-year tax exemption, in year one, the building would pay, the owner of the building would pay $900,000 instead of paying regular taxes, which by my estimation in 2020, that would be $2.4 million, so in year one alone, it would be a huge savings for the developer, but more importantly, it's where does that savings come from? And so you can see under the regular traditional taxes, the schools get a sizable portion of them, 39%, but based on the 2017 numbers, the taxes go to the school system, and that's true for every regular taxpayer, so even if you, you know, if you're a homeowner and your kids have grown, or your kids go to private school, or your kids don't use the school system for whatever reason, you still have to pay school taxes. And now this building's owner has requested that this council give them an abatement or an exemption from that that would allow them to not only pay less, but it also means that their payment in lieu of taxes would go 95% to the city, 5% to the county, and a big zero goose egg to the school system. And I think that our schools are important, there's a reason that everybody has to pay school taxes even if you don't have children in the school system, certainly the city benefits as a whole by having good schools, and so I think it would be short-sighted and a big mistake to actually have, to give this developer a huge tax break that's going to come at the expense of our schools over 30 years. I also think it's important to note that the vast majority of units in the building will be two-bedroom or larger, indeed, there are many five-bedroom units in this proposed building, so it's not impossible that families will one day live there with children that will be attending the New Brunswick school system, and currently I think the schools pay about $19,000 per pupil, and so for every child that's in that building, the school district will have to educate them, and every other taxpayer in our city will have to pick up the tab for doing that over the next 30 years, and I think it's very short-sighted to cut a deal at this point that's going to commit the city to cutting the schools out of this revenue stream for 30 years. It's hard to predict who's going to be living in the building in 30 years, it's hard to predict what the taxes are going to be, and to give the developer who, as far as I know, has no ties to New Brunswick, is not a local company, I believe based in Georgia, they've created an LLC based in Delaware to do this, I think that would be a huge mistake, and so I think you guys need to ask yourself, who do you represent? Do you represent the people or the developers? And... the developers, and I know that some people, including our Housing Authority Chairman, are confused about who they represent, Mr. Dale Caldwell, Dr. Caldwell is the chairman of the Housing Authority, he famously said, "We're here to represent the residents and the developers," and when I called him out on that and corrected him, he denied saying it, well, video doesn't lie, you can look up the video and watch for yourself, but our Housing Authority approved this developer, and that's the reason we're here, and that's the reason they're able to even make this application to you, and I hope that you, especially since you're elected, will put the people first, and the taxpayers, and the school system of New Brunswick first, instead of approving this rotten deal, that you will reject it, as you're allowed to do under the law, it's an application that's been made, and you're free to do what you think is the right thing to do, and I hope that when you're making that decision, you think about the children and the future of New Brunswick, so please do the right thing, and vote no on the 21st to this horrible deal.
Thank you.
Hi, Patrick Gibson, my heart is in New Brunswick, but my home is in Matson currently, so I'll limit myself to just an actual question at the moment, the same ordinance on the long-term tax abatement is subject to a financial agreement created by the mayor in consultation with legal counsel, this resolution says it should be attached here too, as Exhibit A, maybe it's attached in your copy, but it's not in the public packet, and I was wondering where that financial agreement is publicly available, that this resolution would be subject to.
Clerks always have, we don't attach it, because that's what the public receives, and to make those packets bigger and kill more trees, we're looking conscious in that regard, but certainly, it's available, I know some people have requested it prior to today, clerk's office has it.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mark Van Buren, I own a property of forty-one Comstock, and I came here tonight because I most recently received a water bill on my property of over eight thousand dollars, now, the normal water bill on this property per quarter is around five hundred and twenty-five dollars, immediately after I got my bill, I did call the water department, I asked them to come out, took them two weeks to come out, read my meters, confirm the reading, which they said was a correct reading, and I spoke with the utility director, he offered to come out, change the meter, have it tested, put a new meter in, and after that was all done, he came back to me and said that it was confirmed that the meter was working properly, but that I must have a leak in my house, now, this is a tenant-owned property, I don't live there, I do visit the property regularly, and I do have tenants in all the apartments, so it's not like anything is unattended, the equivalent to get a bill of this size without half a million gallons of water, so, I've had several conversations with the utility director, and I still haven't got an answer as to how this is going to be handled, you know, I've spoke to other landlords, I know one on Handy Street that got a bill for five thousand dollars last year, he did refuse to pay it, hired a plumber to certify there were no leaks in his property, ended up getting a tax lien on his property and paid it, you know, in order to alleviate the tax lien. So, I came here tonight because I'm trying to find out what's the best way to resolve this issue, I don't feel that I have a leak in my house, I don't feel that a leaking toilet is going to cause half a million gallons of water to go down the drain in a building that is fully occupied, not in that course of times, so, you know, I know the city has upgraded the meters, a lot of the meters in town, there's new electronic meters made by a company called Census, there have been numerous cases around the country where these meters are not either reading accurately, or there's a software issue, or a billing issue going on, where people are being billed the wrong amount, Chicago, Atlanta, Santa Fe, New Mexico, Wichita Falls, and the last one was San Diego, are the ones I was able to find just by searching the internet, so, I was hoping that maybe the city council could help me to look into this issue and find out what's the best way to resolve it, my bill was due today, I haven't paid it yet, I don't want a taxing on my property, and I don't feel it's fair to charge my tenants, who are responsible for the water, a bill that, you know, if they're not the cause of it, why should I go around and say, hey, your normal bill is five hundred dollars, now you owe me eight thousand, so, I'm hoping the city council can help me out, looking into this issue.
Okay, you've had your house well checked out and everything to make sure that...
I have gone through the house personally, I have just recently hired a plumber, I have an appointment next week for the plumber to come through the house, to see if there's any issues that need to be repaired, that appointment is happening next Wednesday.
Okay, you can push out here.
I know Mr. Lattenberg is as methodless genuine as he represents to the council, and has had the meter tested, I believe it is doing his own due diligence and investigation to see if there was a problem, but it's a rental property, so...
It is a rental property, yes.
People living there, a lot of people, I don't know how many people...
It's a four-family property, currently has, is fully occupied at the moment, you know, there's never been a time where tenants are not in the building, you know, I do visit the building on pretty much a weekly basis, not that I'm going through every apartment, but I am in the basement, I am around, I would typically hear water running if there was an issue, you know, and I have not heard that anytime I've been visiting there.
How do you know that the tenants didn't use that much water, did you talk to the tenants?
I have talked to my tenants, and I have met them, know where the bill, and nobody has brought to my attention that there's an issue.
There's that possibility, though, they could, I mean, you know, if you have a four-family there, how do you know that there actually wasn't that much usage?
Honestly, no, I can't answer honestly on that fact, but I do rent to Rutgers students, they're all on their own, they do pay their own utilities, they are concerned about their money, you know, so, you know, I do charge them for water, they are aware of that.
Sometimes they have water balloon fights, and things like that, so you have to...
Well, happily, you got the water balloon fights, I think...
I'm just asking about the usage, I'm just asking if there was anybody that did the usage, I mean, that's a fair question.
I mean, there are outside hose connections, which are turned off inside the house, and not accessible to the tenants to use outside water, so anything with just the inside.
Mr. Anderson, Mr. Lattenberg has responded to the complaints or concerns of the owner, the meter was read twice, the meter was taken out and tested for its accuracy, the meter came back one hundred percent accurate, it's only nine months old, it was installed in June of 2017, the bill that, I'm sorry, Mr. Van Buren, is that the name? Mr. Van Buren got, I will tell you, is very large, it does not reflect his past history, where there were fifty or sixty units of water charged to him with actual reads every quarter, this one is seven hundred and twenty-eight units, but the meter appears to be working as it should, and it has produced, in the director's opinion, a, an honest reading of the water that ran through that meter for the last ninety days, Mr. Van Buren asks, how do we resolve it, I'd like to give him the opportunity to try and explain how, it doesn't have to do it tonight, but, you know, we'll meet with you, you could try to explain to us how seven hundred and twenty-eight units went through there, the meter is working, it's only nine months old.
I would like to comment real quick, the meter, the manufacturer date on the meter is 2013, I have a picture of the meter they removed from my building, so it was not a brand-new meter, the meter they replaced it with is a manufacturer of 2017, so, they put a meter, a four-year-old meter into my building, now, I purchased the building in 2013, a new meter was put in at that time, I was contacted last year that they wanted to replace it again, I didn't question the city, I didn't question the utility department, I said, okay, you want to put another meter in, fine, I'll meet you there and put another meter in, I, at that time, I didn't look at the manufacturer date, but when I had this issue, and took the picture, and looked at it, I'm like, why is this meter manufactured in 2013, but now they're putting it in, it's four years old, has it been in other properties, has this meter been an issue, you know, is there a history of this meter, or is it just been sitting in a warehouse for four years, and now they decided to pull it out and use it?
I can answer that, there's eight thousand accounts in this town, but regardless of the age of the meter, it was tested, and it tested one hundred percent accurate.
The meter itself, the numbers were correct from the beginning part?
I didn't take a picture when they installed the meter back in June, so I don't know what the start number was on the meter.
Would we have records of that?
I'm like, Mark, we...
So the number was correct right there?
It started zero, and we had a normal reading of fifty units, and then I believe it was the second reading was a seven twenty-eight.
Was it happening elsewhere in the city of New Brunswick?
No, I mean, we have people that are coming in with some higher bills, that have been estimated for a while, and they have a leak that's going on, this is not the case here, but we address those issues one-on-one, and when we have a high reading, we reread it, and then we also, you know, take the opportunity to take it to a third party to have it tested by a state-certified weights and measures facility, that's reputation is how it goes, and I'd be happy to take it, any... Well, Mr. Lattenberg himself, from one of our phone conversations, did mention a property where a mother was disputing for her daughter, who was a tenant of a three-thousand-dollar water bill, he didn't, I don't know the address, but that was during one of our first conversations, so I have to beg to differ that I'm an isolated case, I do know the property owner at fourteen Handy Street, who had the five-thousand-dollar bill last year, whose average bill was around two hundred and fifty dollars a quarter, so those are two examples that I know of myself.
You know how that ended up, or how it...
That's the one I brought up earlier, where he refused to pay it, brought a plumber in to inspect his property, which is why I didn't do that, up until today, when I called somebody, had the plumber show up once a month to inspect the building, and then go back to the city with that information, and telling that the plumber couldn't find anything wrong, nothing's been changed, and it was still, you know, charged that amount of money, he paid it because there was a taxing put on his property after he didn't pay it.
And how about after that, did they go back to the...
No, he, I spoke to him, this was last summer, and he has moved on since then.
I'm going to have, you know, I'll hand out another number of usage that's gotten back to the...
His usage went back to normal after they changed the meter.
Is there anything we can do in terms of at least making sure that he pays some money without getting overly known for now, still check into it.
I mean, I'm not against paying what I'm due, I'm not trying to get out of paying my water bill, I'm just trying to understand, and even explain to my tenants, you know, this is what, this is what it is, and this is what you have to pay, you know.
The money wouldn't have been until December this year, I hope there's the opportunity to figure out what the right thing is here.
Okay, what about the interest on the bill between now and December?
I don't know what the final outcome of the bill's going to be.
Okay. And if, so the taxing sale wouldn't take place until December?
Right.
Would there be interest between now and then, or only once the sale is made?
Interest usually starts to accrue after you've missed the due date.
Of the water bill.
Right.
Which is today, was due today.
Is there any possibility of working out a deal that he pays basically double for now, while we continue to look at this, and if we can't find anything else, then we do what we have to do.
What do you mean by double for now? I'm sorry?
His normal usage, I'm sure that the city has some usage over a period of time or whatever, so if his normal bill is, what's your normal bill?
Well, the average I figured was five hundred and twenty-five, Mr. Lattenberg has my account, when I spoke with him yesterday, he could probably come up with the average... It's normally a fifty-unit property.
Okay, so if it's the five hundred, if you were to pay a thousand dollars as a good faith, as we're discussing what's going on, and continuing to do this, is that something that the city could do?
You want us to collect what we bill, you'd be upset with us if we did not, but this is a very unique situation, I understand, maybe you can give me some time to discuss it with Mr. Lattenberg, and we can have an additional conversation with him, Mr. Van Buren.
And we're sure too of the lights in the street and everything else, is okay?
That wouldn't be a factor.
It wouldn't affect the meter then?
So can, just give you a look at it, I can't promise you anything.
All right, I promise you, I will look into it.
Somebody will reach out to you from the city and get together...
Through Mr. Lattenberg, I'm assuming.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Love, and it's nice to be here today, I understand that the vote for the tax abatement was moved next week, but I just wanted to bring it up again, and I think that the city council should consider Charlie Cradaville's words, this tax abatement will give zero money to the schools, which would be millions and millions of dollars over a thirty-year period, and that could do so much good for New Brunswick schools, and like Charlie said, schools, children are the future, and this would be, I feel like, for the good of the community, that the city council should vote no on this.
Why are you two actors? Don't you think I say, I miss you actors?
I live on Comstock Street.
Comstock?
Yes.
Forty-one?
No.
You're a lot of work there.
No water balloon fights, yeah, but, yeah, millions and millions of dollars, and I truly wish, I, I feel like we should vote on the community's behalf, no, for this, and not vote yes to allow an out-of-state developer profit and millions of dollars, yeah.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Albert, I live in the second ward, Chalston Street, one forty-seven Chalston Street, I come here tonight because I also oppose the tax abatement for this high-rise building on New Street, as a property taxpayer, a homeowner for many years here, I've watched my taxes steadily increase year after year, I see these buildings going up, I see, many of them have these quasi-public designations, and they get all sorts of tax breaks or tax abatements, and they sometimes replace radials that were paying their share of taxes, as I am, and like this building going up, it's also going to replace at least two buildings that I know, if it's going to occupy the same footprint there, I think it's probably not going to serve New Brunswick very well, I don't see how it could contribute to New Brunswick's welfare, other than maybe add more density, which we don't need, as for, how many, could someone tell me how many units this building will contain?
One hundred and sixty-eight.
One sixty-eight? One sixty-eight? Are there any units that are set aside?
One eighty-six, excuse me.
How much?
One eighty-six.
One eighty-six, are there any units that will be set aside for lower moderate income families?
I don't believe so. It's student housing, it's proposed for student housing, and students are not eligible for affordable housing.
Well, it's not exclusively student housing, is it?
It is, almost all of the bedrooms in there are single occupancy bedrooms, it is a company that specializes in student-oriented housing, it is not legally dedicated to student housing, like a Rutgers dormitory, but I would expect all, or nearly all, units to be student-occupied.
I don't know if that's going to happen, because we have a lot of student housing in town, and a lot of them are not occupied with all students, so I'm not sure that that will actually happen like that, but even if it does, we're not going to get the benefit of those of us who pay taxes here in the city, and I just wanted to say that this is not going to serve people like me, and those, you know, who are homeowners, and have seen their taxes steadily increase, I want to, I would love for this building to actually be, have some apartments set aside for at least lower moderate-income families, and then it would have some kind of, you know, benefit for the city.
So right now, the amount of taxes that this building would pay versus the amount of taxes that the people are paying now, what's the difference?
The property pays a little over two hundred thousand dollars in taxes now, and under the pilot, it would pay about one point six million dollars in taxes, so it's about eight times as much. So, it's about eight times as much that they'd be paying in taxes.
I'm not sure what that means.
That means that the people, if you leave it the way it is now,
Yeah.
people would be paying an extra two-hundred-odd-thousand dollars in taxes.
Right.
This building will now pay one-point-something in taxes. So, the difference there of eight, nine-hundred-thousand dollars obviously goes to the taxes.
It's a difference of one-point-four million dollars.
But, over the years, we're talking about a tax abatement for, what, thirty years, isn't it? So, I mean, that's...
But each year?
Each year.
Yeah. It's essentially a vacant piece of property. There are two abandoned structures that have been vacant for a decade or more on the property now. It doesn't pay that much in taxes compared to what it potentially will pay with this new building on the property. It'll pay about eight times as much as it does now.
Well, you keep saying that, but it doesn't, I don't see that. My math is a little different, because over a thirty-year period, it's not gonna be paying its fair share. You figure this is a tax abatement, it's gonna be over a long period of time. Right now, you know, we could put something here if we really need to use that footprint, something that would benefit the community much better. I mean, this is not benefiting the community. We don't need that much more density, especially in that area. That's one of the most busy areas in the city. And more density in that area, right now, it's pretty bad, especially a rush hour. I think it's a very bad idea, and I urge the city council to vote against it. Please think hard on this issue, because it's important to those of us who live here. I've lived in this city for over thirty years, and I've seen a lot of these go up, and I've seen a lot of these buildings come down that were priced reasonably for rentals, and then higher rental buildings that are replacing it. Well, that's not really helping, because a lot of people have been driven out of the city. And I see this building not helping, because it's also gonna be high rental. And the fact that it's mostly for students doesn't help us, doesn't help me, the taxpayer, other taxpayers. And I really want to urge this panel to vote against it. Please think hard on this issue, because those of us who live here don't see this as a benefit at all. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Council Vice President, Council Board Members. My name is Jack Kado. I am the life bond resident of New Brunswick at sixty-one Renaissance Lane. I'm a proud taxpayer and also a proud homeowner. I'm also running for a school board as a candidate against the incumbents this upcoming April. And one of the reasons why I'm running is because I'm an advocate in many different areas of my life, including my work as a job developer for the art of New Jersey, where I advocate for a lot of consumers who have special needs. This tax abatement is very detrimental to our public school systems. Potentially, according to some data that we've accrued from the state and from local municipal government, the public schools can potentially miss up to seven-hundred-thousand dollars a year in taxes that could be deviated to the public school system. However, it's not gonna occur under that current abatement. And I think that's very, very detrimental to our community and to the growth of our school and to our students. It's not really fair. So, I am running as an advocate in order to oppose abatements like this. You know, I do feel that if it's a dependent company coming from outside New Jersey, or if it's someone within New Jersey who wants to purchase property here, they should be able to pay full taxes in order to do so. And I think this is also very permanent, considering that the New Brunswick School Board is now being sued for a lack of resources in regards to the special needs programming. You know, that seven-hundred-thousand dollars that they can get from rejecting that tax abatement, from that building specifically, could be used to provide, you know, paraprofessionals and resources for a special needs program. Nancy, my running mate, and I have went to the school board meeting last month, and we had a parent come in begging for a paraprofessional for his daughter, who hasn't been present for about three or four months. That's highly illegal, I would like to state. And I think that's something that can be easily resolved if we have our council members and our school board members and any other elected official in New Brunswick standing up and being an advocate for that community. I'd like to thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
Good evening, my name is Ronzbel, and I'm part of the Unity Square. Today, I want to tell people how an individual is not able to make it. And as regarding the rent receipts, my name is Gloria, and I have lived on Ballwin Street in New Brunswick since 2010. On December fifteenth, I found a notice posted on my door that the house was being foreclosed by the bank, and I needed to move out by January thirty-first. I asked my landlord about this notice, and he told me to ignore it. But then, I came to Unity Square, and they helped me find out that my house had been transferred to the bank on December sixth. So, I learned that I should not pay my general rent to my old landlord, but keep the money to pay the bank. But the old landlord kept coming back to my house and demanding my rent, even threatening me and my family and calling those names. Several times, I spoke with Patricia in the city rent control office, and she told me not to pay the old landlord, but to keep the money aside. Thankfully, I had been getting receipts from the old landlord. That way, Patricia could prove to the bank that I had a continuous tenancy in the apartment for many years, and therefore, the bank could not evict me without cost. But if I didn't have my receipts, I would have been evicted by the bank. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. George Cusis, I'm born and raised in New Brunswick and graduated from New Brunswick High School. I would like to know, since I believe all these high-rises that are going up are sponsored by the administration, and you're the administration, if the administration was aware that this developer was going to ask for a tax abatement when he came to put his plans before the city?
I do not know.
Well, you're the administration. Did you know that this developer was gonna ask for a tax abatement? I, my building is directly behind this. For forty, forty-five-hundred square feet of space, I pay two-hundred-four-thousand dollars a year, and I resent someone getting a tax abatement who's gonna make millions on that building. And I don't believe that all the buildings that have student housing are filled. Mr. Patterson is here. I'd like him to tell me that Rockwell Hall has all students. Is he able to tell us that?
I don't know that either, though.
Well, let me ask you this. Do you know how much income that property's gonna produce for the developer?
The one?
The one that's before you for a tax abatement?
I don't think so.
Is Mr. Cradaville's estimate that the taxes that that would bring without the abatement are over two-million dollars?
I don't.
Well, don't you think you should know that before you vote? If you ask, you have rent levelling board in this city, you could find out if the buildings are all tenanted, to see if this is needed, and why we have a hundred and sixty, we're talking about a hundred and sixty-eight units. We're not talking about how many people that can fit. No one's giving us that figure. I will tell you right now, that developer is gonna make a lot of money on that building. Rockwell Hall by itself, when it sold, it sold for fifty-seven million dollars. And these people who are talking about our school system getting nothing, they have every right to be upset over it. And you should think twice before you vote for it. And somebody should come up with the statistics to tell you how much income that property's gonna bring based on the bedrooms that it has and the rents. Because I just saw the figures on Quincy, I just can't believe it. Those apartments are not for the people of New Brunswick. And so, why should we suffer the freight that we have to do to pay for them, to make all that money? If he's right, then it makes twenty million, two million in taxes. Without the abatement, you're giving away how much money. And that's what you should think about before you vote. And you should find out exactly what they're doing, and if you knew that they were getting asked for an abatement, I think you should have thought twice about the approvals.
Hi, my name is Linda Stork. I've lived in New Brunswick over forty years now, and this reminds me of when, a long time ago, we had been asked, because Washington School was never rebuilt when it was torn down, because who's gonna live on French Street, right? And so, when we were asked, when I was part of the PTA at Lincoln School, and the superintendent said, well, yeah, sure, it'd be great to have a public school there, but where could we put it? And I said, how about the old lumberyard? You know, and Mr. Ice Bucket on the corner there? Great spot for a public school, right in the middle of the neighborhood, where all the kids are coming, instead of having to walk all the way over to Lincoln School. So, they laughed, they said, oh, we could never be able to get that apartment, you know, that property for a school. But then, he turned around and used eminent domain to get a drugstore. And when I read about it, the tax abatement for Walgreens, I read about it in the paper, it was the same week Walgreens was opening. It had already been built. So, I'm thinking we didn't really need to do all that to attract them. It was already built. And I, you know, I also questioned, you know, eminent domain being used for something like a drugstore. I mean, that drugstore is a very old line for them. And whether you think it's a benefit to the community or not to have the huge drugstore chain like that, still, when you compare it to a public school, I think that's more like what the people that, you know, brought eminent domain about, I think that's more what they had in mind when you use eminent domain to kick people out and take property for the public good, more like a public school than Walgreens. And then, so that, you know, that just kinda added insult to injury, since we couldn't get the property for a public school, and then to just not even get any... So, yeah, so what the abatement does is, now, no money from those millions and millions that Walgreens is making there go to the public schools. And, you know, as a person that worked in our public schools for over thirty years and had to live with many of the shortages that we have in the public schools because of lack of funds, and it just looks like we're not trying that hard to increase, you know, the taxes that would go to the public schools when we give people these abatements that circumvent the funding to the public schools and just give them a bargain when it doesn't look like, actually, we need to do that to get them here, and as has been spoken about by several people, you know, is this even who we want here? A lot of these cities where, just like what we're seeing here, where building after building of luxury high-rises go up, and then, next thing you know, they can't fill them. One city had to start subsidizing their own public servants, their cops, their teachers, their firefighters, to live in the buildings so the buildings wouldn't be vacant. So, that's something when you, you know, you keep building buildings that your own teachers and firefighters can't live in. I mean, is that what we wanna do here? And as far as the density, it's crazy already, just trying to get across town. If it's a class change, or I guess it's, you know, tied into the university, but there has to be some, you know, accountability on the university's part for that. If this is supposed to be students or mostly students, I can't even imagine if they're all gonna have cars, like, how that's gonna work. I had to get from my house by St. Theaters over to the library one night to read a couple of stories to the kids. It took me forty-five minutes, it's crazy. You just sit through, like, light after light after light. So, yeah, I think we should look at the big picture here and try and do something that's more constructive to our city as a whole and the people that are already here. Because all these buildings are just pulling in more people from other places. Even, I don't know, I guess that's it.
Anybody else in the public? Selena?
Second? Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar? It's Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.